In our next story, some local students are getting a chance to learn more about green gardening.
We're planting fruit and flowers.
We're planting flowers and onions.
Students from Pinewood Elementary School in Tahanga are getting hands-on with a green edible garden in their schoolyard. They are preparing garden boxes by planting fruit and vegetable seeds that will harvest in the spring.
We're gonna do radishes, we're gonna do certain pickles, we're gonna do lettuces, and the plants that are ready for this type of the year.
These students who belong to the city's LA's Best After-School Enrichment Program will maintain the garden themselves.
We're working with the American Chemistry Council, LA's Best, and a whole bunch of parents and kids today to make sure that we teach everybody about sustainability. It's very important for us to lead a sustainable, healthy lifestyle.
The goal of this edible garden is to bring children closer to their food source to help them see how the food they eat actually grows.
I think it's important for them to understand the connection between food and, you know, how we go about cultivating it, and it's not something that, you know, that happens in mom's kitchen, or in dad's kitchen, or at McDonald's.
The hope is that by planting, growing, and harvesting their own food, these kids will learn the value of making healthier choices.
The program also teaches kids about recycling. In this week's List of Things to Do, a tribute to the city's unofficial poet laureate, a dance performance by Atrescu, and honoring Martin Luther King Jr. and Nelson Mandela.
You're invited to join the LA Central Library for a tribute to Los Angeles's unofficial poet laureate, Wanda Coleman, with an evening of readings and shared memories on Saturday, January 18th at 5:00 PM at the Mark Taper Auditorium. Coleman, who died this past November, was considered a larger-than-life figure who made us remember histories of poetry, and oppression, and music. Audience members will be asked to share a favorite line from one of her poems during this participatory program. There will also be a public reception immediately following. The Central Library is located at 630 West Fifth Street downtown. Go to lapl.org for details. The Wooden Floor, a Santa Ana dance company comprised of underserved youth, has been inspiring audiences and transforming young lives for 30 years. You can catch one of their performances on Saturday, January 18th at 8:30 PM at the Red Cat Downtown. Known for its collaborative dance-making process between the youth and internationally-recognized artists, The Wooden Floor helps break down stereotypes of who can create and inspire art. The Red Cat, which stands for Roy and Edna Disney Cow Arts Theater, is located at 631 West Second Street downtown. For ticket prices and other dates, go to redcat.org. And on Sunday, January 19th, from noon to 5:00 PM, the California African-American Museum will celebrate the legacies of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. and Nelson Mandela. View film screenings of Dr. King's speeches and Nelson Mandela's speech made during his appearance at the Los Angeles Coliseum in 1990. Experience music, theater, and dance performances that represent our city's diverse communities. CAAM is located at 600 State Drive, Exposition Park. For more information, visit caamuseum.org. And that's a look at some upcoming things to do.
And there was probably no one who knew more about things to do in and around California than TV host Hughl Hauser. One year after his death, fans gathered together again to celebrate the life of the man who brought a touch of California gold to all the people and places he covered. Anna Marcos has more.
We're gonna do what Hughl wants us to do. He's gonna say, "Look at that beautiful California gold, and that's something."
Fans at the Griffith Observatory marked the first anniversary of Hughl Hauser's death by gazing at the sunset and holding hands. Hauser was loved by California viewers for his PBS show California's Gold, which focused on California's landmarks, towns, cities, customs, and, yes, its parks.
You know, he gets excited about stuff?
Yeah.
It just gets you excited to go see it, I don't know.
Well, and also, he was really personable, and just human with everybody.
We watched him from the very beginning, and we wondered, "Who is this guy that came from Tennessee that has such a gift of gab?" And anyone that he interviewed was just as drawn to him, and he could get anyone to talk about anything. And we used to go to the restaurants that he went to.
He would make you feel excited about finding a shell on the ocean, anything he saw.
Councilmember Tom Labonte, who was a friend of Hauser's, led the memorial celebration, showing pictures of the late TV host when he visited the Griffith Observatory in 2001, and when he hiked to the top of Mount Hollywood in 1984. Labonte even demonstrated one of the fascinating details that Hauser himself might have pointed out in one of his shows.
On December 22nd, the sun set on that line there where the council member is toward the Pacific Ocean. And at the equinox in March where the council member is now, the sun will set directly to the west. And then in the summer, on June 21st, the summer will set on that line there.
But most of all, Hughl Hauser was down home, the kind of man local hot dogs are named after.
I just actually, sort of in his memory over the weekend, went and had a Hughl dog at Pink's. Two hot dogs, chili and cheese.
Hauser died in January of last year at the age of 67 after a struggle with cancer. But his memory and all his visions of California's gold live on. I'm Anna Marcos for LA This Week.
While he was alive, Hauser donated all episodes of California's Gold and all his other public television shows to Chapman University to be archived and made available to the public. That's going to do it for this edition. Thanks for joining us. I'm Ellen Chang. A reminder that you could catch us online at lacityview.org. You can also follow and like us on Facebook. We'll see you back here next week for more of LA This Week.
Graffiti removal? Call 311, the toll-free number for non-emergency services. 311, your one call to City Hall.
G'day, Troy McCavon from North Hollywood. You're watching LA City View, Channel 35, Our City, Our Channel.
Shh. Good morning. Today is Wednesday, January 15th. I want to welcome everyone to your Los Angeles City Council. This council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 AM. The public is always welcome. Mr. Clerk, I believe we have a quorum. Could you please call a roll?
Bloomingfield, Bond, Buscagno, Sadio, and Leonard Fuentes, Weezer, Carrasco, Coria, Labonte, Martinez, O'Farrell, Parks, Price, Wesson, ten members present, and a quorum, Mr. President.
First order of business.
Approval of the minutes.
Sadio moves, O'Farrell seconds, next.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Bonding moves, Bloomingfield seconds.
Mr. President, there is a request from the Office of Finance to receive and file item number two inasmuch as the taxpayer has resolved his liability.
Okay, so without objection, that'll be the order?
Very good, sir. Item one is an item notice for public hearing. We do have a card in on that matter.
So let's just hold that one and move on to the next section of items.
Very good, sir. Items three through 13 are items for which public hearings have been held. A report for item 10 has been circulated and is now before council for consideration.
Okay, members, any specials? We're three through 13. Any specials? Seeing none, let's prepare to vote. Ah, let's hold the commissioners. What, I think that's three through eight.
That's correct, sir.
And then we'll vote on the remaining. Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Mr. President, items 14 through 25 are items for which public hearings have not been held. Ten votes are required for consideration.
Without objection, those items are now before this body. Do we have cards?
Yes, sir, we do. We have cards on items 19, 21, 22, 23, 24, and 25.
Okay, let's prepare to vote on the remaining items. Members, specials. I do not see any. Let's prepare to vote. Madam Clerk, if you could please open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
And, Mr. President, those ordinances will go over one week for second consideration unless reconsidered later today with 12 members.
Okay, I am guardedly optimistic that we might get to 12.
Very good, sir.
So hopefully, at that time, we will reconsider and take them up. Okay, that brings us where now?
That brings us to items 26 and 27. They're scheduled for closed session. Would you like to hold them on the desk?
I wanna hold the closed-session items until I have a chat with Mr. Coria.
Very good, sir. Mr. President, that takes council back to presentations. Items called special.
Mr. Carricks, we are at our presentation portion of today's council agenda, council meeting. Would you like to proceed?
Sir.
Well, then, let's go ahead and do that. And if we could, if we could cause my understanding, sorry to cut you off, we have a representative from Senator Pavly's office. If she would please come.
Yes, if she'd like to make that presentation.
Please come forward. Do we want her at the table? Mr. Carricks, are you gonna go up to the center aisle?
Well, good morning, Councilmember President Wesson and councilmembers. Senator Pavly regrets not being here, but I am honored to be here on her behalf. And as a recognized environmental leader, Senator Pavly takes great pride in recognizing the growing sustainability efforts in her district, which includes the city of Los Angeles, a great portion of the West San Fernando Valley. It is my great pleasure to present to the city of Los Angeles the Senator Pavly's Environmental Sustainability Award to the entire council for banning the plastic bans this year. Councilmember Carricks, you were valiant in your efforts to advocate for this effort. And we also want to thank Senator Pavly, would also like to thank Councilmember Weezer for his invaluable collaboration in bringing this ordinance to fruition. So thank you very much, and we look forward to working with you on future endeavors.
Well, thank you. Well, I'd like to thank Senator Pavly on behalf of the council. I'm sure other council members may have something to say as well. Of course, Senator Pavly is, I believe, the great environmental leader in the state legislature in our lifetime, so I think it's a great honor for the city to receive this recognition from her. The plastic bag ban got a little opposition and a few complaints in the beginning, but the fact is, those have absolutely trickled off. I think it's now well-accepted. Almost every store that needs to respond has responded appropriately. There are a couple not so much, but by and large, this has been a self-enforcing regulation, and I think we will save a huge amount of resources and damage to our rivers and oceans. So I think we're all very proud of what's happening in Los Angeles, and thanks Senator Pavly for her recognition.
Mr. Bloomingfield.
Just wanna echo the thanks to Senator Pavly, and especially to Senator Pavly's staff, who always does such a great job working for Senator Pavly and whoever other people she used to work for, who knows? But she does a great job.
And if I might, as an aside, Fran, Senator Pavly, was my seatmate for four years. We also have the same birthday, except for I am significantly older than she is. And when Fran Pavly was my seatmate in the Assembly, you can run around and chat with other members, and your seatmate can vote for you. Because of being Ms. Pavly's seatmate, anything that was environmental, she voted me yes on. I was such an environmentalist that I received their legislator of the year award, and I owe that to Ms. Pavly. She is a mover and a shaker, and I do miss her. She's the best seatmate that I had. So let's give them another round of applause. We thank you, we thank you, we thank you. Okay, you know, let's go to our commissioners. Now, I believe we have... So what I wanna do, Mr. Sadio, you know, we had a very good meeting with, I believe it was our Hackla appointees in your committee, so I wanna defer to you. I believe that we could... I believe we could... I believe that we could, I believe we could move all of them, but the choice is yours.
Mr. President, it's your pleasure. We can do it for efficiency and move them all. They're all here, they're all very talented. We had a thorough vetting. The mayor continues to stay right on top of it. These are very impressive appointments to have the life experience, to understand living in the housing projects, but also who have, many of them who have come from there and gone on to get PhDs, and these are extraordinary women, all women. And so it's your pleasure. I'm happy to move the matter if you would like.
Okay, then, with that said, again, I agree with you, Mr. Chairman. We had a very productive meeting. I'm so glad that I was able to be there. I can remember I got a message from the women from Ramona Gardens that they love me. So of course, I am ready to move this item. So, Mr. Clerk, if you could just read the commissioners' names where it relates to this one set of appointments.
Very good, sir, and these are items five through eight on today's agenda, the following are appointees to the Housing Authority of the City of Los Angeles Board of Commissioners. The first appointee is Ms. Kimberly Freeman, the second is Ms. Daria Nunez, the third is Ms. Shane Goldsmith, the fourth is Ms. Maria Lu Calanche, and that's the extent of them.
Okay, let's see if we can confirm these appointees. Madam Clerk, would you open the roll? Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That passes. Congratulations to each and every one of you. And thank you for volunteering to serve this great city. Mr. Clerk, guess what? We're at twelve. So why don't we reconsider the items that we can, that are twelve-vote requirements that do not have cards, and let's vote on them while we're at twelve members?
Very good, sir. Those would be items fourteen through eighteen and twenty.
Okay, so, members, this vote is on reconsideration. Could we please open the roll? Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Okay, so...
Mr. President, those matters have now been reconsidered and are now before council for a final vote.
Okay, I have only one card on this set of items, so why don't I request that Mr. Walsh come forward? Mr. Walsh, we have your card on item nineteen.
And, Mr. President, I apologize, those are items fourteen through eighteen and twenty, so nineteen is not included, sir.
Okay, so, hold on, Mr. Walsh. So let's vote on those items. Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Okay, let's move on. We have, we have a couple of, we have two more commission appointments. If you could read the names?
Very good, sir. These are for the Commission on the Status of Women, and we have Ms. Dallas Fowler, as well, as well as Ms. Nikki Mark.
Okay, why don't we ask both of them to come forward and sit at the center table so we can grill you? And I'm going to defer to Mr. Sadio. Would you, I believe this is part of, under your committee as well? And I was there at the committee and had an opportunity to help you interview them, and I'm sure if Mr. Price was here, Ms. Fowler, he'd say, "Thank you, thank you, thank you." Mr. Sadio.
Yes, sir. As you know, both are eminently qualified, very talented, great role models, great bridges for the city, to the community, and serve as great role models. We appreciate both their backgrounds, particularly the business background, the mentoring, and the connection that they established for the city, to all women. As I frequently say, as a grandfather, I'm always pleased to see that there are women in government that my granddaughters could look up to and try to emulate and be like in the future. So with that, I recommend that we confirm them.
Okay, you know, I, again, I was at the hearing. It was a very impressive day. We had women for a few commissions that were there, and the two of you were very impressive as well, and I'm sure if Mr. Price was here, he would say the same thing. So what I'd like to do is, members, I'd like to push this forward with the permission of Mr. Sadio, and let's see if we can elect a few more commissioners. In fact, I have to do this. I have to do this because I know your mama. I want to put the two of you on the spot, and I'm going to have you just say something briefly about yourselves and your desire to serve. We will start with you.
Hi, my name's Nikki Mark. I am a native of Los Angeles, born and raised. I have spent the last eighteen years working for entrepreneurial companies here in Los Angeles, overseeing many aspects of these companies, from business affairs, and legal affairs, sales, marketing, human resources. I am excited to serve. I'm embarking on the next phase of my career and my enjoyment of doing something that's fulfilling, that gives back to the community, and that helps women in this community. As I'm a working woman, I think I know what it means to have the city behind you and to work hard and to be a good role model for other women.
Thank you. And Ms. Fowler, since you have brought half of the visitors today, I will afford you the opportunity to close.
Thank you so much, Council President, and thank you very much, Councilmember Gil Sadio, and the rest of the council members for your kind words. Greetings, everyone. I'm Dallas Fowler. I am the Principal of Daltech Global Solutions. I'm born and raised in Los Angeles City. Very fortunate to be here, and when I say that, I mean fortunate to have the experiences of growing up in some of the not-so, some of the darker areas of Los Angeles. So I've been fortunate enough to actually see people killed in front of me. I've been fortunate enough to see people stabbed and all of the above. But I've also had the fortunate experience of having great women like the women and the men that are sitting in that section to pour into my life, and I hope that I can make them proud doing this. So thank you very much, and thank you to my friends and family from New Frontier Democratic Club, from the Los Angeles African-American Women's Public Policy Institute, and all of my friends at the Southern Christian Leadership Council. Thank you very much for attending, and thank you all. Thank you.
Thank you, and I am... Come on, New Frontier, you can make a little more noise than that. We're going to embarrass her on her first day. Okay, the city of Los Angeles is very fortunate to have you both. Madam Clerk, I think we should vote on this. Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Mr. Walsh, now I'm going to jump to item nineteen, and we'll take the vote on that. Okay... Mr. Walsh, you may want to wait a second so that the crowd leaves, and then we can
Hi, John.
Shh. Mr. Walsh, followed by Mr. Akala.
John Walsh, blogging at Hollywood Highlands, H-I-G-H-L-A-N-D-S dot org, or simply J. Walsh Confidential. This concerns Bureau of Street Lighting and the maintenance of Main Street and Martha Luther King Boulevard lighting district. The property owners in the area have to pay $3,251. This is for maintenance. That's an outrageous amount of money for maintenance. You know, since you switched your lighting system to digital, or whatever you call it, the lights used to go out all the time in my neighborhood. They haven't gone out in ten or twelve years. This is based on a previous maintenance schedule which is not needed. The African-Americans who own property in this area, Martin Luther King and Main Street, should not have to pay this outrageously large sum of money.
Mr. Akala, please come forward. Start is time.
One minute only. Maintenance, maintenance, and a lot of other issues of the street lighting, and a lot of other issues in this city have to do with a lot of wasted money. The only reason you keep taxing the residents is that you mismanage the monies that come to you, so you have to go around taxing the people even more. It is not up to you to keep on taxing the people. The people elected you to help us, not to bring us down.
Mr. President, he is not talking about this item.
Okay, well, he is gone as of now. Okay, let's prepare to vote on this item. Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Okay, that brings us where?
Mr. President, that brings us to item number one, called special for cards.
Okay, we'll go to item number one. The cards are John Walsh, who passes, Mr. Sax, Mr. Akala, and Herman.
Yes, thank you. Good morning, Arnold Sax. And again, as I've done numerous times, this is not necessarily about the question of whether the lien is granted or not granted. It's more or less the use of the city's assets and manpower, especially in this time, as we heard when you were talking about your commission report, another budget deficit. The use of manpower to collect funds. Now, these funds would go into the general fund, but this is nickel-and-dime stuff. If you used the manpower properly and went after, and you might have been reading some of the business sections, about some of the fines banks have been paying from the foreclosure fiasco. It's inspection costs. Manpower should be used to go after the ordinance that you created to eliminate blighted, foreclosed properties, or at least fine the companies responsible.
Mr. President, those comments are better geared for general public comment.
Come back, okay, come back, Arnold, to the item.
I'm talking about these cost expenses going to the general fund. You could, again, we've heard from the head of the Budget Committee, you are facing a budget deficit. Is that $1,000 a day per home better suited to help the city's general fund or these liens that accumulate maybe to $30,000 for ten properties? These ten properties were foreclosed properties, that's $10,000 a day. Do the math.
Thank you, Mr. Sax. Mr. Akala.
Yes, I wish to speak one minute, hold the other minute. Anything that relates to real estate, I'll be here, because we're doing real estate in the wrong way. Building and Safety Department report and confirm a lien for 2157 West Dallas Drive. Lien, it's only $2,000, $453, which, do you know how much it takes the average person to earn that money? No, you don't, because you sit here and get a nice salary. So I'm going to talk about the other place. Building and Safety Department report and confirmation of lien for 14243 West Victory Boulevard. That's right down my alley, North Hollywood. You're taxing the valley, the valley wanted to be away from the city. Look, you do not belong in real estate. A basic place to live belongs to the people, not to the government. Obama, McCain, you Democrats...
I know, I know. Get back on, get back on the topic.
Yeah, the issue of real estate for everybody. Everyone deserves to have a home.
That's not the topic, Juan.
The topic is, what are we doing?
No, that's not the topic, Juan. Mr. Herman.
We're hearing protests about inspection costs. Building and Safety, Jose Wezar, here's one of the items, 820 West, 101 Street, liens. Hearing protests, Los Angeles, all you Angelinos, God hates injustice. The public hates injustice when it comes to liens, when it comes to the inequitable, not fairness, but the noncompliance of citations, violations, and worse to say, code violations. Yes, when programs by the city, by REAP and Rent Ask Crow, go about a day-to-day business with unfair disproportionate and unequal unfairness, it's such a bias when we hear about the protests and appeals and objections related to the lien process. The FBI needs to investigate Housing Authority and Building and Safety. Hold my time, one minute.
All right, let's prepare to vote on these items. No speakers in the queue. Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Okay, that passes. If I could ask Channel 35 to focus on the gentleman to my right. Members, we have a colleague. Help me out. There, a little more, a little bit more. There he is. We have a colleague that's visiting. He's here from Houston, Texas, Jerry Davis, a council member for what they call District B, and aren't you like the vice? The vice mayor pro tem? I would hope that my staff will take him around to make sure that he meets many of you. He's trying to get a feel for how we operate. It's been explained to me that Houston has eleven council people, and that the mayor actually runs the council. They're looking for ways to make it more efficient. They have a population of over 2 million, and so I'm having a chat with him as to how it works here. But can we give Jerry Davis a round of applause? Our colleague from Houston, Texas. Give him a wave. Give him a wave, Jerry. Wave, wave him. There he is. There he is. Okay, Justin, if you guys could make sure you introduce him. Okay, Mr. Clerk, what's the next item?
Mr. President, that brings us to item 21, called Special for Cards.
Item, item 21. I don't have a card. Where's? Go to the next item. I don't have a card on 21, so I've got to find it.
That would be item 22, called Special for Cards, sir.
Okay, so let's go to item 22. I've got Mr. Walsh, followed by Mr. Sacks. So Mr. Walsh, followed by Mr. Sacks. I'm speaking on item 22, I trust. I have a card in on 21. This is the aftershock, L.A. Arena Land Company. These are aftershocks of the, remember the Farmers Field? Remember that fantasy? Remember how everyone said Farmers Field is a go, and I got up here and warned you like a Cassandra, it isn't going to happen? Well, Farmers Field didn't happen. Everything I said was correct. My psychotic ravings of last year is now conventional wisdom. And what you have here is another aftershock of the planning case, the trust fund. Bury the L.A. Arena. It's not going to happen. If this helps us to bury that fantasy that a lot of people made money preparing reports on, HollywoodHighlands.org. One minute. All right, Mr. Sacks.
Yes, thank you again, Arnold Sacks. Well, actually, the L.A. Arena Land Company happens to be a subsidiary of AEG. And their involvement in this sports entertainment district is greater than the actual football field. They are going to be the management that AEG is picking to actually oversee the convention center. So basically, what they're going to be doing here is paying themselves, getting paid twice. It's a very, very neat arrangement. But specifically, what they got involved in was the advertising on the convention center. And back when the wonderful Janice Hahn, who amazingly is now in Congress, was on the entertainment of the Tourism Committee, they had hearings regarding advertising at the sports arena. Not the sports arena, at the convention center. And this company was chosen, again, as a subsidiary of AEG. So it's gamesmanship that's being played by the city council. And you should just be aware of it. How much money has been generated from the advertising from the convention center? None. And I believe when that item came through, Councilman Labons, because at the time we were having another budget deficit, imagine that, requested that about 3% of the advertising revenue go to help the libraries. Fortunately, or unfortunately, that didn't happen. But it's the gamemanship being played by the council.
Thank you, Arnold. Okay, members, let's prepare. I do not have a card for you. Let's prepare to vote on this item. People, if there's a card stuck somewhere on this item, please let me know. I do not have a card. Let's, let's vote on this issue. And if we could keep it down, if we could keep it down, Mr. Akala. Okay, let's prepare to vote on this. Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen eyes.
Okay, you know what, Mr. Clerk? Why don't we recess this meeting? Mr. Buscagno.
Can we send item 28 forthwith, please?
Item 28, forthwith.
Thank you.
Oh, we didn't vote on it yet?
Mr. President, that's, that's part of the special meeting. We're not quite there yet.
Okay, so we're going there, right now. So if we can recess the regular meeting and go into the special meeting.
Very good, sir. Bloomingfield, Bonner, Buscagno, Cidio, Angler, Fuentes, Wezarr, Carrasco, Corian, Labons, Martinez, Ofero, Parks, Price, Wesson. Thirteen members present, sir.
Okay, if I could have Mr. note disturbances?
Mr. President, items 28 and 29 are items for which public hearings have been held. An Innovation Technology and General Services Committee report has been submitted and circulated for item 29.
Okay, can we put those two items together and vote for them? I see no one on the queue.
Yes, sir.
So in the special meeting, we're now voting on 28 and 29. Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen eyes.
Mr. Presi-- Mr. President, would you like to send those matters forthwith?
Yes, please, both forthwith.
Very good, sir. And would you like to adjourn the special and return to the regular?
Yes, please, thank you. We'll go ahead and do that.
Very good, sir.
And then where does that take us?
That brings, that brings us to item 21, called Special for Cards.
Mr. Walsh, come on down. How are you doing today, John?
Well, great. I didn't get hit by a car, by the mayor.
Oh, okay. Are you sure about that?
Yeah. Any day that I don't get hit by a car with the mayor, it is a good day. Number 21. Incidentally, we didn't get agendas here for the special meeting. This is REAP. Again, what we've said about REAP, it is one of your best projects. Every single meeting, we are nabbing bad landlords. Most landlords are excellent. My landlord is okay. I've never had to sue him, and he's never had to sue me. And I would just like to say, this is West 35th Street. I would like the name of the landlord here. West St. Elmo Drive. What happened is that they broke the code. You people out there who are the renters went to the city, and the city informed them, and if they did not bring the units up to code, that the rent would be paid to the city rather than to the landlord until it was repaired. And that's what happened. HollywoodHighlands.org. Three minutes.
Mr. Akala. Is there a name of your pony?
One min-- it's a pony baloney like City Council. Pony baloney.
Pony baloney.
Yeah, just like City Council. You're full of baloney.
That's very clever. All right, thank you.
Very clever, yeah. We're clever, we're more clever than you, but you're clever in us. You're levying taxes and blah, 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 you know? Anyway, somehow you're very clever. The REAP program is good, like Mr. Wedge said, but I call it the rape program. You know why I call it the rape program? Because the landlords are raping the tenants. And there is no end to the amount of rape that can go on by a landlord to a tenant. One minute only. Bye.
All right, thank you very much. Seeing no speakers on the queue, we'll open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen eyes.
Great, thank you very much. That is approved. Next item. 23, I believe?
Yes, sir. That brings us to item 23, called Special for Cards.
All right. Mr. Walsh? And we can reset the clock at one minute for Mr. Walsh?
I've only spoken three minutes. This is my fourth minute. Mr. City Clerk, tell me how I spent four minutes up here. One minute. Mr. City Clerk, tell me how I spent four minutes up here.
We're going to, please start the clock.
It's two minutes. Okay, I'm only going to take one minute. Now, this is about Staples Center. I want to tell you that the show that's put on at the Staples Center dwarfs the Academy Awards in Hollywood. It's the best awards entertainment show, the best entertainment show in the world. It's a fantastic show, and you, the city council, and everybody in L.A. should be proud of it, even the politicians. But they are using, and they're going to give us only $100,000, $100,000, and $10,000 for city services. They are using the Staples about a million dollars' worth of city services. They're rich, they're powerful, the music business industry can afford to pay at least $200,000 or $300,000 for the services we are paid, and this is like slipping money under the table to them. One minute, HollywoodHighlands.org.
All right, Mr. Akala.
I have only spoken two minutes, I think. Look, only 54 seconds. That's ridiculous. If I was giving you an Amy, I would need a lot--
Mr. President, he is not talking about this item.
I'm talking about you're taking away my minutes without my permission.
Please stick to the item. The city clerk is tracking the time.
Okay, I'm going to sue you. Okay, I will be suing you for all the raping that goes on here in City Council.
Mrs. President, he has not talked about this item.
Anyway, look, the motion picture industry, the music industry, is full of people walking around with beautiful gowns. And the rest of us, 99% of the people are eating shit, and we don't want to eat shit no more.
Okay, thank you very much. Mr. Herman.
Fine and dandy that $110,000 in the Grammy Awards, when there's a decline based on the what, 2020 report of our commission? And yet, we, the public, all you Angelinos, every person in Los Angeles who pays taxes, stakeholders, is this the most appropriate manner and time to spend $110,000 out of the public funds? No. Why? Because as the two commentators had made their comments, it's very true. The city continues to decline. Yes, City Attorney, as you interrupt, it's the speaker that interrupts the speaker, not the City Attorney. And in this approval to negotiate a payment of $110,000 for city services, that's inappropriate, very inappropriate, even while you speak, as I speak. I'll go ahead and let you finish. Hold my last, what, few 57 seconds, 56? City Attorney, you can laugh about the way we pay off all these financial groups that can support themselves. Why should the city support--
He is not talking about this item, Mr. President.
--the Grammy Awards? Injustice to the Grammy Awards. Pay out of your own padded wallet, sirs.
Okay, Mr. Walsh. You have one more minute, Mr. Walsh. Oh, I'm sorry, that's on the next item. So you can start coming up for the next item, though, if you'd like.
People, thank you, Mr. Walsh.
We're going to take 24, Mr. Walsh next, so you can start making your way up. Seeing no other speakers on the queue on this item, we'll open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
14 eyes.
Thank you. Item 24, please.
Mr. President, that's item 24, called Special for Cards.
That's only one minute. I only got one more minute. HollywoodHighlands.org, J. Walsh Confidential. This concerns reinstating offer. This is for the teardrop rapist for an additional six months. This is, of course, I have asked, you put all this wasted information, dumb information loaded down on the computers. All I'm asking for you is a list of all, the city clerk, a list of all the awards out there, and how many have been collected. I've been asking it for two years, and you say you don't have the time to do it. You have the time to do a lot of other things. And incidentally, this is an award for 70, reward for $75,000, while Mike Otto's father, Joseph's Award, is substantially less. How come? Is this more important, the teardrop rapists? In fact, you're never going to catch these people, and you never do. These awards are, rewards are a waste of time. HollywoodHighlands.org.
Mr. Herman. I'm sorry, that's on item 25. Okay, we don't have any other cards on this item. We'll go ahead and open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
14 eyes.
All right, item 25. Mr. Herman, come on up.
He said 25.
I had a card on the other one, too.
Motion for Price and Ofero relative to a request for exemption. The word exemption is always a bad formula to local business, exemption. Why should any exemption take place when it's the public that needs to know exactly what's happening here? The transparencies behind the convention center fees, a waiver, a policy for the Glamour Gowns 2014 event? To approve a free waiver for Glamour Gowns? I should have worn my Batman cape and called it a gown. Hooty, hoo, hoo. So in event, the amount of 500, whoa, $5,516,038 for the convention center for room rental fees in accordance with the convention? Now, think about it. The 2020 report by the commissions, again, I'm pointing it out, the city is in a decline because you don't know how to make business. You're offensive when it comes to business matters for the public. So do something that's most appropriate and take account so that the action by our two councilmen, Mr. Price and Ofero, will be in the appropriate action for the public, not of your special interest, not your status quo. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So you know the speakers on the queue will open the roll. On that item, close the roll and tabulate the vote.
14 eyes.
Great, thank you very much. Where does that take us, Mr. Clerk? Closed session, I believe.
Mr. President, that brings us to items 26 and 27. They're items scheduled for closed session.
Okay, we'll go ahead, and I believe both of those items already had public comment in committee?
That is correct, sir.
Okay. And so we'll go ahead and go to Mr. Corian.
Mr. President.
Please, Mr. Corian.
Thank you, Mr. President. Item 26, I believe, can be dealt with in open session unless members have questions or concerns regarding the recommendation. Budget and Finance concurs with the recommendation of the City Attorney, and we can deal with that one now. The Willetts matter does need to be heard in closed session.
Okay, there are no speakers on the queue, so we'll go ahead and take that item in open session.
And, Mr. President, if I may, for item 26, in the case entitled Tammy Kim versus City of Los Angeles et al., there is a recommendation to expend $575,000 in settlement.
Okay, thank you. Then that'll be the recommendation that was approved in Budget and Finance Committee. Seeing no speakers on the queue as well, we'll go ahead and open the roll and close the roll and tabulate the vote.
14 eyes.
Great, that'll take us to the final closed-session item, and we'll ask that we clear council chambers for that item. The council members, you can have one staff member assigned to you during the closed session, and any staff or city attorneys that are working on that case can stay in chambers. So sergeants, if you could secure chambers. Thank you very much.
We've never had a traffic accident like this before where a teenager has decided to run from the police and been struck by a motor vehicle. We've never had a traffic accident like this before where a teenager has decided to run from the police and been struck by a motor vehicle.
Curfew laws restrict the right of juveniles to be outdoors or in the public places after 10pm until sunrise the next day. Curfew laws restrict the right of juveniles to be outdoors or in the public places after 10pm until sunrise the next day. Such laws aim to establish a safer community and to better protect people from becoming victims of crimes or becoming involved in a crime. Such laws aim to establish a safer community and to better protect people from becoming victims of crimes or becoming involved in a crime. Most people don't agree with our curfew laws and would rather run the risk of being picked up by the police and ticketed for violation of curfew. Most people don't agree with our curfew laws and would rather run the risk of being picked up by the police and ticketed for violation of curfew. However, they are more likely to run into the many real dangers that face us every time we go out at night. However, they are more likely to run into the many real dangers that face us every time we go out at night.
We've found that kids out so late are normally caught up in violence, traffic accidents, and we have no good. We've found that kids out so late are normally caught up in violence, traffic accidents, and we have no good. Some of these kids still don't, they're not aware of the law and they're not educated on it. Some of these kids still don't, they're not aware of the law and they're not educated on it.
Drinking, drugs, sexual predators, and gang-related activities are only few of the dangers we face regardless of how young or old you are. Drinking, drugs, sexual predators, and gang-related activities are only few of the dangers we face regardless of how young or old you are. If you are under the age of 18, this law applies to you. What happens if you are caught? If you are under the age of 18, this law applies to you. What happens if you are caught? You will be taken to the station where the ticket is written out to you and your parent or guardian are called to pick you up. You will be taken to the station where the ticket is written out to you and your parent or guardian are called to pick you up. If your parent cannot pick you up, you will be placed into a protective custody or sent to a juvenile facility. If your parent cannot pick you up, you will be placed into a protective custody or sent to a juvenile facility.
Guardian at something like an event such as grill beef. Guardian at something like an event such as grill beef.
The guardian is not just someone appointed to by the parents, the guardian is someone appointed by the courts. The guardian is not just someone appointed to by the parents, the guardian is someone appointed by the courts.
You can legally stay out late if you are participating in a religious, educational, or political activity accompanied by a parent or guardian, You can legally stay out late if you are participating in a religious, educational, or political activity accompanied by a parent or guardian, going to or from their place of employment, responding to some type of emergency, returning home from school, cultural, or recreation activity. going to or from their place of employment, responding to some type of emergency, returning home from school, cultural, or recreation activity.
That's our message is not only enforcing the curfew violation but also educating them that they need to stay safe. That's our message is not only enforcing the curfew violation but also educating them that they need to stay safe.
The curfew laws are not just here to protect us, they are here to protect the safety of everyone in our community. The curfew laws are not just here to protect us, they are here to protect the safety of everyone in our community.
The average adult spends more than eight hours in front of the screen each day. Children spend up to four hours. Studies show that sedentary lifestyles put you at risk for disease, even at an early age. But a healthy lifestyle is just a click away. Los Angeles Recreation and Parks provides over sixteen thousand acres of parkland, with parks and lakes, swimming pools, golf courses, skate parks and dog parks, and more than one hundred eighty community recreation centers. A healthy lifestyle is just a click away. L A Parks dot org.
It just takes One Cup.
Every year thousands of children in our community drop out of school, they quit on their families, they give up on themselves. But together we can change that.
By sponsoring a child for the cost of one cup of coffee a week, you can provide a child with a mentor, a place to play, and a safe haven like Halifax Palace.
With One Cup, I can play soccer after school.
With One Cup, it helped me get here, to college, preparing for my future.
It just takes a moment to change a child's life. Go to OneCup.org and make a difference today.
We've never had a traffic accident like this before, where a teenager has decided to run from the police and been struck by a motor vehicle.
Five eight five, I can hear five oh six, you watch three.
Curfew laws restrict the right of juveniles to be outdoors or in the public places after ten PM until sunrise the next day. Such laws aim to establish a safer community and to better protect people from becoming victims of crimes or becoming involved in a crime. Most people don't agree with our curfew laws and would rather run the risk of being picked up by the police and ticketed for violation of curfew. However, they are more likely to run into the many real dangers that face us every time we go out at night.
We've found that kids out so late are normally caught up in violence, traffic accidents, and we have no good. Some of these kids still don't, they're not aware of the law and they're not educated on it.
Drinking, drugs, sexual predators, and gang-related activities are only few of the dangers we face regardless of how young or old you are. If you are under the age of eighteen, this law applies to you. What happens if you are caught? You will be taken to the station where the ticket is written out to you and your parent or guardian are called to pick you up. If your parent cannot pick you up, you will be placed into a protective custody or sent to a juvenile facility.
Guardian at something, like in events such as parole beating.
The guardian is not just someone appointed to by the parents, it's a guardian is someone appointed by the courts.
You can legally stay out late if you are participating in a religious, educational, or political activity, accompanied by a parent or guardian, going to or from their place of employment, responding to some type of emergency, returning home from school, cultural, or recreation activity.
That's our message, is not only enforcing the curfew violation, but also educating them that they need to stay home and stay safe.
The curfew laws are not just here to protect us, they're here to protect the safety of everyone in our community.
The average adult spends more than eight hours in front of the screen each day. Children spend up to four hours.
We've never had a traffic accident like this before where a teenager has decided to run from the police and been struck by a motor vehicle.
585, I can hear 506, you watch three.
Curfew laws restrict the right of juveniles to be outdoors or in the public places after 10pm until sunrise the next day. Such laws aim to establish a safer community and to better protect people from becoming victims of crimes or becoming involved in a crime. Most people don't agree with our curfew laws and would rather run the risk of being picked up by the police and ticketed for violation of curfew. However, they are more likely to run into the many real dangers that face us every time we go out at night.
We've found that kids out so late are normally caught up in violence, traffic accidents, and we, uh, have no good. Some of these kids still don't, they're not aware of the, uh, the law and they're not educated on it.
Drinking, drugs, sexual predators, and gang-related activities are only few of the dangers we face regardless of how young or old you are. If you are under the age of 18, this law applies to you. What happens if you are caught? You will be taken to the station where the ticket is written out to you and your parent or guardian are called to pick you up. If your parent cannot pick you up, you will be placed into a protective custody or sent to a juvenile facility.
Guardian at something like an event such as Pearl Beach.
The guardian is not just someone appointed to by the parents, it's a guardian is someone appointed by the courts.
You can legally stay out late if you are participating in a religious, educational, or political activity accompanied by a parent or guardian, going to or from their place of employment, responding to some type of emergency, returning home from school, cultural, or recreation activity.
That's our message is not only enforcing the curfew violation but also educating them that they, uh, they need to stay home and stay safe.
The curfew laws are not just here to protect us, they're here to protect the safety of everyone in our community.
The average adult spends more than eight hours in front of the screen each day. Children spend up to four hours. Studies show that sedentary lifestyles put you at risk for disease, even at an early age. But a healthy lifestyle is just a click away. Los Angeles Recreation and Parks provides over 16,000 acres of parkland with parks and lakes, swimming pools, golf courses, skate parks and dog parks, and more than 180 community recreation centers. A healthy lifestyle is just a click away. LAParks.org.
It just takes One Cup.
Every year thousands of children in our community drop out of school, they quit on their families, they give up on themselves, but together we can change that.
By sponsoring a child for the cost of one cup of coffee a week, you can provide a child with a mentor, a place to play.
In a safe haven like Hollaback Pal.
With One Cup, I can play soccer after school.
With One Cup, it helped me get here, to college, preparing for my future.
It just takes a moment to change a child's life. Go to Onecup.org and make a difference today.
We've never had a traffic accident like this before where a teenager has decided to run from the police and been struck by a motor vehicle.
Five eight five nine, Kia five oh sixty, watch three.
Curfew laws restrict the right of juveniles to be outdoors or in the public places after ten PM until sunrise the next day. Such laws aim to establish a safer community and to better protect people from becoming victims of crimes or becoming involved in a crime. Most people don't agree with our curfew laws and would rather run the risk of being picked up by the police and ticketed for violation of curfew. However, they are more likely to run into the many real dangers that face us every time we go out at night.
We've found that kids out so late are normally caught up in violence, traffic accidents, and we, uh, have no good. Some of these kids still don't, they're not aware of the, uh, the law and they're not educated on it.
Drinking, drugs, sexual predators, and gang-related activities are only few of the dangers we face regardless of how young or old you are. If you are under the age of eighteen, this law applies to you. What happens if you are caught? You will be taken to the station where the ticket is written out to you and your parent or guardian are called to pick you up. If your parent cannot pick you up, you will be placed into a protective custody or sent to a juvenile facility.
Guardian at something like an event such as parole meeting.
A guardian is not just someone appointed to by the parents, it's a guardian is someone appointed by the courts.
You can legally stay out late if you are participating in a religious, educational, or political activity accompanied by a parent or guardian, going to or from their place of employment, responding to some type of emergency, returning home from school, cultural, or recreation activity.
And that's our message is not only enforcing the curfew violation but also educating them that they need to stay home and stay safe.
The curfew laws are not just here to protect us, they are here to protect the safety of everyone in our community.
Okay, I believe that takes us to public comment. It'll be in this order if you can just line up and if you can all approach the podium together. John Walsh. Followed by Herman.
John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org. The two hours within the back talking about a lawsuit that, uh, that someone brought up concerning, uh, the state, uh, sorry, straight of the streets. And let's talk about Second, Second Street where the big accident happened yesterday where a woman was hit by a car. The LAPD gets up and says, with the mayor in the backseat, "It wasn't the fault of the, of the LAPD. She walked between two cars and she darted into the street." Then, the, uh, LA Times, which had a surveillance camera, released the video that showed that the LAPD was lying. Now they say, "Well, we don't know, it appears." But she wasn't in the crosswalk. Then, the LA, the, the media goes down there and shoots a videotape of a pool of blood in the crosswalk. So now it's the city's position that the woman was hit by the car, by the mayor's car, and then crawled fifty to a hundred feet, holding the blood, and then pouring the blood in a pool all over the crosswalk, your crosswalk. You're lying. The mayor will be called when she sues, and she already has a lawyer, and he will testify under oath. You, I'm telling you right now, there even should not be an LAPD person behind the wheel. The mayor should have someone from staff. The mayor hit this woman, it was the fault of the LAPD cop car, the cops lied about it. The LA Times released half of their video. They didn't release the collision half. They don't shoot excerpts. The video is there, the LA Times won't tell it to you. Come to my website, right now you will see on my website the half-naked picture of Justin Bieber and the story about how he was raided. Half-Naked Bieber, HollywoodHighlands.org.
Who's next?
I don't give a rat's ass about Justin Bieber. Just another, uh, just another child star going bad. How come television is only showing us all this glamour, all this bullshit from Hollywood that we don't even need? And how come city council is always eating when we're speaking? And when we eat a little bit over here, they tell us not to eat. Are we not the people? Are we not equal to city council? Are we not equal to Washington and Congress? Are we not equal to Obama, the president? We're all equal. We are the people, and we're telling you all idiotic politicians, stop ruling our lives. Stop keeping us homeless. Stop giving us minimum wages that do not amount to a little pile of dog shit. No. It's public comment and we're allowed to use street language. You idiots.
You've got, you've got to keep it to the purview of what's before us.
I don't care, I'm not on.
All right, we could shut off your mic as well. You could keep talking though. Okay, keep talking.
A place to live to everybody first. Do not tax us to death so we have to go out and live on the streets and talk like street people. I was a teacher for twenty years, and now I'm talking like a street person to you. You are nothing but a bunch of dickheads.
Respect of accessibility for shortage of curb cuts, ramps, and pedestrians right-of-ways. To this day, after eighty years of your ignorance, we, the public, Angelenos, it's Woltz versus L.A. one day, and soon to come it will be the Civil Rights Against Pathways Accessibility. Los Angeles' broken system of sidewalks despite its awareness of consequentially denying a meaningful access for all persons, not with just only disabilities, but all you elderly people. Would you please mind keeping the laughter down, Eric from Mr. Weezer's office? Yes. More and more mobility for disabled people is and should be a federal and state regulation, not the nonsense of your inner actions. The fact is, is this, your dim-wittedness to address the broken system. The city has failed to develop or implement the best idea for sidewalks and streets. Seventy-eight percent of trips, slips, and falls happen throughout the county, Los Angeles County, and how many today in Los Angeles that you, the taxpayers, will be paying for during the lawsuits that will come against you? There is no intervene to become effective. There is no risk management involved here because you would rather see lawsuits fix our damn streets, fix our sidewalks, because the constituents that you serve or don't bother to have a meaningful relationship with is taking action soon against you. Thank you.
Candido, come on up.
Mr. President, council members, I'd like to, we'd like to wish you a Happy New Year and may your families and yourselves be blessed with good health. With me is Mr. John Camaro with the Van Nuys Neighborhood Council. We are here today because we want to thank General Manager Ron Nichols from DWP for the great work he did there. Mr. Nichols is a man of honor, courage, and integrity, and I believe from the very first day that he came to office or to the department, he did everything to serve the residents of this great city, uh, and to return the department to its former greatness. And one of the ways he did that was by trying to remove the cancer, the disease that was within the department, the corruption and the, some of the other faults that they had. And so for that, we want to thank him. For many years I've been here before the city council and I've seen some politicians who are just, um, seduced, seduced by the, the department and what we call the golden goose, uh, but Mr. Ron Nichols never did that. So we thank you, Mr. Nichols, for your service to the city of Los Angeles. Also, Mr. President, we're going to have a great opportunity to be served by another great gentleman in the form of Chief, uh, Jim McDonald, who was a former LAPD. He is one of those gentlemen that is unique. He reminded me a lot of Deputy Chief Croker. I don't know if any of you remember Deputy Chief Croker's from the eighties. He was an officer who, uh, who could serve the people, uh, be an officer, but also care about children. He was, he was an outstanding man. I think that we're going to see the same thing with Mr. McDonald, and I hope that this council will fully support, uh, Mr. Chief McDonald in the future. Thank you, Mr. President, council members.
Great. Thank you very much, Candido. Appreciate that. Arnold Sacks. Richard Robinson.
Mr. President, members, they were the worst of times, they were the best of times, says Charles Dickens in A Tale of Two Cities. Sir, I don't want to sound like Dr. Pangloss, but these are, in my estimation, the best of times. They're the best of times. God's in charge. The world is revolving, rotating as it should, in God's hands. I don't want to give the impression that I'm naive, but as President Obama, as Commander in Chief, wins the war in Afghanistan against terrorism, repairs our nation's infrastructure after defeating House Republicans in midterm elections in November, retools Detroit, Boeing, US Steel, Grand Rapids, Michigan's furniture industry, retools our shoe and clothing industry in, uh, New England, helps us to make our own toys, as the consumer indices indicate, the stock market is down, is rising. So they are the best of times. Thank you.
Michael Waterman Hubman, come on up. Michael? Michael not here? Okay, not here. All right, that concludes all the cards that I have. Sorry, I said that. I just called you twice. Yeah, they're disrupting the, the public.
Yeah. Hi. My name is Michael Waterman Hubman. I'm a human rights, homeless right, and right to share food activist, and at Right to Share Food, we believe that sharing food with our brothers and sisters is a fundamental human right. Today, I'm wearing my Taisha Miller t-shirt. Can you guess why? When I heard the news from Orange County, it made me sick, sick to my stomach. Fullerton Police found not guilty in the murder of Kelly Thomas. They beat on him for six minutes. It took a year for the audio to see light of day, I mean, the video to see light of day, and on the audio, the police have been heard to say, "You see these hands? They're going to fuck you up."
So, you know, I, I, I want to just stress that.
Do you hold my time?
Don't want you to yell in the microphone as well.
I didn't mean to.
And try to watch the language if you could.
If I could. I, it was a direct quote.
Thank you very much.
Can I get some of my time back? Okay. Anyway, it, it, it's a green light, um, um, for the, um, the police, the largest gang in America, to continue their run of, reign of terror mostly on the underclass within impunity. During Occupy, I, um, I came across a theory that said that, um, the sovereign has, um, franchised out the use of violence, um, and that since then they've lost control of that franchise. Now, is it sadism, intoxication of power, or bad training? I don't know. But I do know that the sovereign, um, the police, uh, are less responsible than, the police are less responsible than the sovereign for this franchise of violence that's out of control. Another matter, um, I've been to the city clerk's office and, um, I guess that's it for me. Thank you.
That concludes public comment. Um, so we'll go ahead and ask for any announcements from colleagues. I believe, uh, Mr. Weezer has one.
Thank you, Mr. President, and colleagues, if you could join me in giving a farewell to a, a young man you saw running around these chambers, advocating on behalf of the Weezer team. Eric Martel, my legislative deputy, my floor director, is off to the Harvard Department. He will now work there in the Legislative Department as the council liaison, so we haven't gotten rid of him yet. Uh, he's still going to be around. Um, but, um, when he first told me he was going to go out there, I thought it was a, he was putting it out there as a negotiation for salary, but I couldn't touch, uh, what, uh, what, what the Harvard Department pays. But anyway, um, uh, he done a, he's done a great job, started with me as a field rep about five years ago, worked his way up. Uh, "Always wanted to do policy," he said. And the great thing about this was that whatever we do here, as you all know, is always related to the field, and it was great to have that experience and somebody in the legislature, on the floor for me, that understands how our field works. So, uh, let's give a big round of applause to a job well done, to Eric Martel. Thank you, Eric, for a job well done. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you very much, and congratulations, Eric, as well. Please, uh, don't yell from the audience. Any other colleagues? Any other announcements? Seeing none, um, any adjourning motions? We have one, yes. Everybody, please rise. Get everybody to please rise. And, uh, thank you. Before we do that, uh, I believe we have some motions that we've got to post and refer as well, so we'll go ahead and do that without objection. Ms. Martinez.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to adjourn in the memory of Arthur Hirschberg of Van Nuys, California, who died on January tenth of two thousand fourteen at the age of eighty-nine. He was born August twenty-third of nineteen twenty-four in Haven Hill, Massachusetts, to Bessie and Sam Hirschberg. He graduated from Haven, Haverhill High School in nineteen forty-two and Tufts University in nineteen forty-five and received his commission in the US Navy in, on November ninth, nineteen forty-five. Arthur married Judith Ann Jacobson in nineteen fifty-four. They lived in Massachusetts until nineteen seventy-four when they moved to Los Angeles. In addition to a long career in manufacturing and transportation industries, Arthur had an extensive history of service to his community. He was a board member of the Youth Employment Opportunity Program, the youth program administered by the LA Employment Development Department. In the aftermath of the Los Angeles riots, he served on President, on President Bush... In the aftermath of the Los Angeles riots, he served on President Bush's commission on the Los Angeles riot relief. Arthur was also a board member of the Executives, a support group for the Jewish Home for the Aging. He served as Chair of the Private Industry Council of the County of Los Angeles, and most recently as Chair of the Mayor's Citizens Advisory Committee for the Japanese Gardens. He was a patient volunteer at the Ronald Reagan UCLA Medical Center for over 10 years, and a proud alumni volunteer for Tufts University for many decades. He was a lifelong fan of the Boston Red Sox and the New England Patriots. He is survived by his wife Judith, his daughters Carol and Diane, and his son Alan, and their grandchildren Michael, Alyssa, and Katie, and his brother Howard Hirschberg. May he rest in peace.
All right, thank you. And if I could co-present with you on that, Arthur was a dear friend, I served with him on the JHA as well. Judith, in fact, contemplated about, flipped a coin whether I endorsed her when she was running against Ensign or not, but, and Arthur thought that was funny, but may he rest in peace.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other adjourning motions? Mr. Parks.
Thank you, I have three adjourning motions today. I'd ask that we adjourn in memory of John Robert Ramsey, who passed away in January 1st, 2014. John was the first of eight born to Robert and Gladys Ramsey. After high school, he enlisted in the United States Army, where he had a successful career. He honorably completed that term of service, and while serving in Seattle, he later met and married Adelia Avery in 1955, whereupon they had three children. During the early years, he worked in law enforcement, the LA County Sheriff's Department, but later decided that law enforcement was not for him. He continued his education, received a degree in computer programming, which led him to pursue a career in system analysis with the County of Los Angeles, where he retired in 1995. He had a myriad of pastimes, golfing, and coin collecting, and trader of baseball cards. He spent most of his time with his family. He's survived by his wife and two sons and a host of family members. Would also ask that we adjourn in memory of David Alexander Broome, who passed away July 2013 from a heart attack at the age of 51. He was born in 1961 in Los Angeles to two of our civic leaders, Homer F. Broome, who was the first black captain and commander in LAPD, and Marion Broome. David, like his parents, were active members of the Holman Methodist Church. He was a member of the transportation ministry, the Friday morning prayer group, the banner committee. His faith served as a motivation for his commitment to improving the community, especially for the benefit of young people. His greatest passion was his ministry as a chairman of the Homer F. Broome, Marion G. Broome Family Foundation. Under this foundation, he created a summer business institute for the lasting legacy for small businesses. He's a graduate of University High School, where he played football, a sport he learned from Baldwin Hills Youth Football as a youth. After graduation, he attended Morehouse College, he was proud to work on behalf of Morehouse in a variety of activities. David worked tirelessly in the community, he's survived by his sister and his brother-in-law. The final one is that ask that we adjourn in memory of Juanita Penland, who was born in 1934, passed away December 25th, 2013. She attended public school in South Carolina, graduated from Lincoln High School, where her talents and popularity allowed her to become a cheerleader and later the major or lead majorette. She met her husband, Charles Penland, when he was an officer in the US Air Force, and subsequently, they were married in 1953, where they had five children. They traveled the world before settling in Los Angeles. In the mid-'60s, Juanita took up the challenge of her new life as a single mother, she worked hard so their children could participate in sports and have access to education and social resources. Her passion for cooking was reflected in her oldest daughter, Charlene, who used to cook for the neighborhood children. Her house was viewed as grand central station for the youth. Juanita was a dedicated employee for over 18 years with Ralph's Supermarket. Her passion for cooking led her to create a catering business where she basically catered to some of the Hollywood elite, including television shows of Me and the Boys, Living Single, Hanging with Mr. Cooper, and also The Steve Harvey Show, where she carved out a deep friendship with everyone she met. Juanita's lifelong dream became a reality when she opened the doors of her own restaurant called Mama's House on Crenshaw Boulevard. She received the Steve Harvey Award in 2003 and '04 for her excellence in preparing the best soul food in town. Mama's House successfully served the community for 11 years. Juanita survived by, has passed away and is survived by her children, Charlene, Sharon, Cecilia, Charles Jr., and Elige and Philip, and a host of family members.
Thank you very much. Any other adjourning motions, colleagues? Seeing none, we're not yet adjourned. We have a surprise visit from the future leaders of the city of Los Angeles, from Westland, I believe, Elementary School, Council District 3, I think, if I recall, if that's by the Moholand area, is that correct? Maybe either 3 or 4, Tom LeBonge or Mr. Blumenfeld. But in any event, welcome to the City Council. Let's give them a round of applause. Fantastic, thank you very much, and we are adjourned. Thank you.